All right. Thank you so much. We really appreciate your patience as we had an extended closed session. Thank you so much for waiting for us. But we will call this meeting of the City Council to order at 5:42 PM. Madam City Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Thank you. Councilmember Kaplan?
Here.
Councilmember Tao?
Here.
Mayor Protem Telamontes will be joining us shortly.
Yes.
Here. Councilmember Valenzuela?
Here.
Vice Mayor Maple?
Here.
Councilmember Guerra?
Here.
Councilmember Jennings?
Here.
Councilmember Vang?
I am here.
And Mary Steinberg will be joining us shortly.
Excellent. Thank you so much. It would be my honor to invite the Chairman Tarango up to do our land acknowledgement. Please.
Kuchikalupa. Well, you guys have already rose, so I won't say that part. But please rise for the opening acknowledgements in honor of Sacramento's indigenous people and tribal lands. To the original people of this land, the Nisanon people, the Southern Maidu Valley and Plains Miwok, Putwin, Winntu peoples, and the people of Wilton Rancheria, Sacramento's only federally recognized tribe, may we acknowledge and honor the native people who came before us and still walk beside us today on these ancestral lands by choosing to gather together today in the active practice of acknowledgement and appreciation for Sacramento's indigenous peoples' history, contributions, and lives. Tongi komo.
Thank you, Chairman. And please, please remain standing as we do the Pledge of Allegiance. So salute and pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Wonderful. Well, we're going to start off this evening with a couple really special presentations. I want to first, do you want to start with one in particular? I want to first hand it over to Councilmember Guerra.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor. It's my pleasure to be here today with Councilmember Mai Vang to present the annual resolution recognizing Filipino-American History Month. And it's my pleasure to bring a little bit of just history. But I want to ask both the Honorable Edwin Perez, the, I think, the first Filipino elected to Reclamation District, please give him a big round of applause to come up to the stage. And also Vince Salas to the podium as well. And also all of our Filipino brothers and sisters from Sacramento who have been leading all the way to come up and join both Edwin and Vince to the podium here. And, and as they come up here, I wanted to, again, one, give a little history. You know, Filipino-American History Month started back in 1992 and was introduced by their founder, Dr. Fred Cordova and his wife Dorothy Leon Cordova. But wasn't formally recognized, and we can spread out here equally on the, so we can get you in on the, on the camera shot there. But it wasn't recognized until 2009, and I want to put a couple dates here, that unfortunately, Congress didn't recognize our, our, you know, Filipino history until 2009. But in that, and at that time, folks were, we were educating folks that the Filipino community first arrived here in October 18th of 1587. And they came aboard to California here from the Spanish galleon ships. So the Filipino community has been here a long, long time. And they have been fighting for the dignity and rights of workers. They have been, you know, advocates in our, with our farmworkers. Larry Itliong and Philip Vera Cruz were advocating there with Cesar Chavez. And unfortunately, their history hasn't been recognized as much. And it's important that we recognize the toil and hard labor because they took the first grape strikes to make sure that the safety of workers were, were being recognized. Also, we celebrate many famous other noteworthy Filipino-Americans like Modesto Larry as well, or we just, Larry Itliong. And, but more so, it's a, it's a proud component here that in our Sacramento region, the Filipino community have been not only business leaders, community leaders, they've been our, in our health professions, but always in every aspect of them, they've been trying to advocate for equality and for, you know, just like when they fought in the wars for us to maintain our rights and came back and were not respected, they wanted to make sure that people knew that we honor our veterans and that we continue that. So let's give a big round of applause to our Filipino community too. And let me pass this over to Councilmember Vang before we hear from the Honorable Edwin Perez.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Guerra. Thank you so much. It's such an honor to present this resolution to our beloved Filipino community, really this month and every month, 365 days long. It's so important for us to take this moment to reflect and really to share the richness of the Filipino, the Filipino community and the Filipino-American history and culture right here in Sacramento. I know in District 8 in particular, we have an incredibly large Filipino community in South Sacramento. And today, the Filipino community is the third largest Asian-American group in the United States and right here in California, the second largest Asian-American group in California. In the Sacramento city and the Sacramento county, we have over 42,000 Filipino community members playing such a critical role in our city and our county. Filipinos are entrepreneurs, they are artists, teachers, lawyers, doctors, community elected leaders, and activists, and really making sure that we fight not just for the Filipino community, but for all communities. And so it's just such an honor to be presenting this with Councilmember Guerra. And in particular, I want to acknowledge Vince Salas, who is a proud District 8 resident. And he's also the current president of the Filipino community in Sacramento, Vicinity. And I also want to take this moment to thank all of our aunties who are here today. Because we have so many, we have so many movers and shakers, but I know that our aunties today are really the backbone of our Filipino community, and we've come so far because of you. And so really just want to pay homage to our elders and our aunties in the Filipino community as well. And so happy Filipino-American History Month. And then I'll hand over the mic to our community.
Yes. And, and I just wanted to also, before Edwin comes up and speaks, highlight the work that many of our aunties, I think the majority here are part of the Lions Club. And all of these aunties have been making sure that our young kids have glasses if they can't afford it. And there are so many young kids who cannot see and can't even start here. So I want to recognize there because I see them always advocating for all of us. And with that, let's bring in the Honorable Edwin Perez, trustee for the Reclamation District, making sure that, you know, as, as we've seen, that our levee stays strong and that our communities stay dry.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Guerra and Councilmember Vang, and also to the rest of the City Council. And I'll be remiss if I don't do a shout out to my councilmember, District 1, Lisa Kaplan, proud resident of District 1, and also Karina Telamontes, our neighboring District 2 in Atomas. Again, it is such an honor to accept this resolution on behalf of the Filipino community, particularly accepting it along with Vince Salas from, he's actually a representative of the Filipino community of Sacramento. And also, we have somebody here that wasn't able to join us, but Dave Tamaio is also the other elected official, Filipino-American elected official from the SMUD Board. And we do have Rob Kirk here also from the SMUD Board. And I do also want to acknowledge Nick Avdis, my fellow trustee from Reclamation District 1000, who's in the back. And apparently he has business here today. So, but again, thank you for, for the resolution. As, as Councilmember Guerra mentioned, October is designated as Filipino-American History Month, which honors the, or recognizes the, the first recorded instance of Filipinos arriving in the United States in a place that we now know as Morro Bay. And of course, there have been succeeding generations of Filipino-American families that have come here over the years. And that includes actually Filipinos that were at during the Gold Rush. There were actually recorded instances of those trying to find their fortune there. And then, of course, during the exclusionary era when laws were excluding Chinese, Japanese immigrants and other Asian immigrants, ironically, that, that racist period in our history actually allowed Filipinos to come to the U.S. because at that point, the Philippines was, was now a U.S. territory. And ironically, Filipinos were considered U.S. nationals at the time, which allowed them to come in. But again, thank you for the reminder, Councilmember Guerra, about the shared struggle we have with our other communities, including the Latino farmworkers in Delano. And that was, that was a great struggle. Again, with that, I just want to say thank you in the traditional Filipino language, salamat, and mabuhay.
Mabuhay.
Mabuhay. Well, we'll have Mr. Vin, oh yes, go ahead. And then we'll have Mr. Vince Salas here.
I just wanted to, to say that we are having a celebration on October 26th. And this, the celebration is to support the Agbayan Village back in Delano. And that was a village that was built for the, for our monongs and also the farmworkers, you know, that worked so hard to get us better wages and better living conditions. So, you know, this, that part of our history are not very much known. So, you know, come out to the celebration.
Thank you. October 26th. Vince?
That gentleman was Dikma Zon, our former vice, our former president for Filipino community of Sacramento and Vicinity. Magandang hapon. Good afternoon. Ako po is Vince Salas. I'm Vince Salas. I represent the Filipino community of Sacramento and Vicinity. I'm the first vice president of the organization. FCSV, as is commonly known, was founded in the 1920s to support the many Filipinos who immigrated and moved to the Sacramento region in the 20s, seeking for a better life after they left their homeland, the Philippines. Since the 1920s, our organization has, has really worked hard to serve our community, including our most recent effort to build the first ever Filipino Community Center in the Sacramento region.
Yes!
And that lifelong dream since the 90s was made possible by the many aunties that you see here. This is their dream. And so for younger generations like myself, we are trying to fulfill that dream for them and working hard with many of you to make that dream a reality. I want to thank the City Council for your approval of a recent grant to our community through the Office of Planning and Research, made possible also through the support of Assemblywoman Stephanie Nguyen. And with that initial support, we are moving ahead with architectural renderings, planning, and, and permitting for the building. So looking forward to welcoming you to that Filipino Community Center at some point, but so filled with gratitude and, and just overwhelming joy for your presentation of the resolution to our community this afternoon. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Give them a big round of applause. And with me, and I'll just read the, the final resolve now, therefore be it resolved, that the mayor and the City Council, the City of Sacramento hereby recognize October 24th as Filipino-American History Month and acknowledges the many contributions Filipino-Americans have bestowed upon the economy, culture, and identity of the City of Sacramento, October 8th, 2024. Congratulations.
And as you all walk up here really quick, I also just want to acknowledge that we have so many Filipino city staff in our city as well. So really want to hold space for them. In particular, I want to give a shout out to my staff, Alexis Diaz, who also identify as Filipino. I don't want to give her a shout out. She's going to pretend like she didn't hear me, but I want to make sure I acknowledge her too. But we have so many incredible city staff here that identify as Filipino. Really want to just hold space and honor them as well. And lastly, my staff, we also got flowers for all the aunties because they deserve their flowers, and I think it's really important to make sure we honor them. So my staff got some flowers in their hand. We're going to be giving it to some of the aunties.
Can we get some more people on this side over here?
Yes, could, some people go this side.
It's not balanced. If you can move a little bit over there. Yeah.
Yeah. You want to move?
This one. Move this way.
Over here?
Yeah.
Yes.
And then if you guys can move back a little bit, like stand behind each other.
Yeah, there you go.
Okay, ready? One, two, three. Want to do a couple more?
Hold on, we have many cameras.
Yeah, we have lots of cameras.
I'll tag you on Facebook.
Okay.
All right. What a beautiful presentation. While we wait for folks to file out and find their seats, thank you so much. It brings us to our next very special presentation, and I will recognize Councilmember Valenzuela.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to wait just a moment because I'm doing this also, and I want to make sure everybody has a chance to file outside after they take their pictures. All right. It is, I'll, remove my mask for this provision. It is my great, great honor to be here again to present this year's annual Indigenous Peoples' Day Resolution, which I will do this year in partnership with my colleague, Councilmember Guerra. But I do want to start briefly by just explaining again, because we do this every year, and I've had some people be like, why do you do this every year? And I say, because it's just continues to be so important to remind people why this day exists, where it came from, because it keeps coming up every year. And so I want to use this opportunity as a day to remind you all that this is both a day of mourning, a day of recognition of real harm, of real theft, of real violence, of real murder that impacts indigenous communities to this day. That this day was selected intentionally to replace another day that used to be celebrated across this country, that honored that work, that honored that murder, that honored that harm, that this day was created intentionally to replace that day as a small tribute, a small tribute to the indigenous communities impacted by that day, to say, we are recognizing that harm and we are replacing it with the day to honor and celebrate you. But this day is also a day about resilience, about celebrating the incredible community that has managed to survive all of that, who fought back, who continues to fight back to this day, to get land, to relearn language, to ensure our young people have resources, all of that work that has continued. It's just so important that we remind ourselves continually just how much the indigenous communities here in California and around our country have persevered through. And so I don't take it lightly when I say that the Chairman of Wilton Rancheria is here with his colleagues because until a few years ago, the Wilton Rancheria didn't exist anymore. Like this was part of that harm that was created. When we say in our land acknowledgement, every week, the Wilton Rancheria as their only federally recognized tribe of that region, that is both a celebration and a reminder of how far we still have to go. They did not used to be the only people in this land, but they've worked so hard to get to the point where they are today. And it gives me such joy to see and to celebrate every accomplishment from the casino to the land to the housing, every step that has been taken to try to rebuild what was broken. But I have to start by reminding everybody because it still comes up. People say, well, why don't we do Italian-American Heritage Day on this day? Why don't we do? I did this resolution when I came into office on purpose to be the second Monday at the request and with conversation with the chairman. It is the second Monday is Indigenous Peoples' Day, and there is no Italian-American Heritage. Pick another month, people, honestly. Like this is, like this month is about giving a little thing back, a symbolic thing back to indigenous communities that was taken very long ago, and to honor the sacrifice that continues to this day and the work that continue, that continues to this day. So with that, I will pass it over to my colleague before I introduce our guest here today, so Councilmember Guerra.
Thank you very much. You know, again, I think Councilmember Valenzuela struck the right tone here, and many communities have faced the impacts of what happened through the colonial history. In fact, these are conversations we have, you know, with my brothers and sisters and also the Filipino community, our own community, the, we recognize also the, the indigenous people of America who have faced that. My own people in Michoacan, the Purepacha people, who've lost their language, who've lost their history through some of the colonialism, and to remind folks about the importance of indigenous history. And the, I think the, the important thing, we have to continue to educate our young people because at a young age, they, they forget that pride and how important it is that it's part of their, who they are as a person. And the, the fact that it's been a struggle each year and reminding people reminds us that we have more work to do to recognize that work. And it, one of the things that I have always been very proud to see is how much that even through all that adversity, even through the, the persecution and the trauma that has, that has occurred, that our communities have come to help other people. So the work that the Wilton Rancheria and the, the work that even growing up as a farmworker, now that the, across the river, the, the Yochidihi, Winnta Nation have done to build housing for folks and to be committed to education and to support an opportunity for the future of kids, that even through all of that, they said, they've continued to give back and to how to not repeat the mistakes of the past. And so it's important that we continue to recognize Indigenous Peoples' Day, to not forget the original ancestors of each land, and particularly our land in our home and here in the city of Sacramento, with our Nisanon and our Miwok and the Maidu. So with that, thank you, you know, Councilmember Valenzuela, and thank you Chairman Tarango for allowing us to be part, participate and be productive members of this land that you have continued to steward. With that, let me pass that back over to our council member.
Thank you. And I would love to welcome the Chairman to come forward along with Tribal Councilmember Jay Williams and Tribal Council spokesperson Kevin Singh and anyone else who would like to join you. And as you come up, I just, I want to thank you. I call you a lot for this and for other things. And I just, it's been, this is my last year doing this, and so I can't walk away without getting a little teary, but also thanking you truly for allowing me to do this with you. And also, as a request to my colleagues, don't forget this day, please. And, and please don't make me come back here when you do Italian-American Heritage Day and lecture you on why that's not okay. Like, don't make me do that. I will. But with that, Chairman, I would love to pass the mic over to you.
Thank you. Kuchi yama, Kaniyo yaset, Jesus Tarango. It's a blessing to be here. I'm feeling really blessed and honored to be here tonight, to be joined by my council member here, Jerome Williams, and our Tribal Council spokesperson, Kevin Singh, and some citizens of our great nation. You know, I, before I get going, and I just want to acknowledge, you know, Councilmember Valenzuela for, for your work, I, I think it's appropriate to say, my nation, we appreciate the work that you did. Mayor, we appreciate the work that we did together with creating a land acknowledgement and so for that. People could say a lot of things, but when you put it to work, that's when it matters to us. And so on behalf of my nation, we're, we're honored that you guys took the time to work with us and, and bring our nation up front. But Mayor Steinberg, Councilmember Valenzuela, and esteemed members of Sacramento City Council, thank you for the opportunity to stand before you today on the unceded territory of the Miwok and Nisanon people. It is with deep gratitude and profound respect that I accept the resolution declaring Indigenous Peoples' Day in our great city of Sacramento. This moment is not just a recognition of the past, but it's a commitment to our present and future. It acknowledges the resilience, contributions, and enduring spirit of indigenous peoples, those who have lived on this land for thousands of years and who continue to thrive and enrich our communities. Today, we celebrate our heritage and honor those who came before us. We remember the stories, traditions, and cultures that have shaped our identity as indigenous people. We stand here not just to commemorate our past, but to inspire future generations to take pride in your heritage and to understand the significance of our connection to this land. By recognizing and celebrating Indigenous Peoples' Day, Sacramento takes an important step toward healing and reconciliation by sharing a true, let me say that again, by sharing a true and accurate history of what happened on this land and across our nation. It signifies a willingness to confront the historical injustices faced by indigenous communities and to engage in meaningful dialogue about our shared future. I encourage everyone in our community to use this day as an opportunity for education, reflection, and action. Let us work together to promote awareness of indigenous histories, cultures, and rights, ensuring that the voices of indigenous people are heard and respected. I would like to express my heartfelt appreciation to each of you for your leadership and commitment to this resolution. Your support sends a powerful message of unity and respect for indigenous communities in Sacramento and beyond. As we celebrate Indigenous Peoples' Day, let us not honor only the past, but also pave a way for a brighter future, more inclusive. Together, we can foster a community where diversity is celebrated and all people feel valued and a part. Tongi komo once again for this significant honor, and let us continue to work together to create a legacy of understanding, respect, and collaboration. Tongi komo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before the resolution is presented, I'm sorry, I had some important city business that I was dealing with in the back room, so I'm sorry to miss the beginning of this. But I just want to add my words of appreciation to you and all of the members of your tribal nation, your sovereign nation, and to say to you that the land acknowledgement which you helped us elevate here is absolutely necessary and also insufficient. The real opportunity is to work collaboratively with you and your people to reclaim your tribal lands in 2024 in modern Sacramento, and to do so in ways that elevate not only you and your tribe, but all of Sacramento. And I look forward in my remaining months, but for many years to come, to watch you, watch you do just that. Thank you.
That is true.
Okay, ready? One, two, three.
Perfect.
See, we have two public speakers on this item, so why don't we? I'm, I'm sorry, consent.
Of course, thank you.
I'm sorry. Let us begin. In fact, I'm going to turn back over to you.
All right. With that, colleagues, does, do we have any?
All right, with that, colleagues, do we have any items on the consent calendar that anyone wishes to have polled, discussed separately, or just comments on? All right, Councilmember Kaplan.
Just a quick item on three and six speaking.
Three and six. Okay, and Councilmember Tau. Three and four, okay. Any other fabulous? Madam City Clerk, do we have any public comment on items or on the consent calendar?
We have two speakers for item number 12 on the consent calendar. First speaker is Ron Ashley, followed by Guy Stevenson, if you can line up behind the podium.
We have a corrupt fire department. They molest women, they raped women in the past, they denied my wife transport to a hospital at the hearing to yank Klein's paramedic license, they lied, both of them. And so you need somebody, you got to get rid of the Sacramento Fire Department. They're the most corrupt agency that the city has. They're horrible. You can't trust them. They don't have an internal investigation department. They turn it over to professional standards. And when that guy testified before the state hearing officer to get Klein, he said that his testimony was guarded. In other words, oh, and then on top of that, he found out that technically, I could not have signed that I did not want it, to be, her to be transferred. That meant that the whole fire department, that's what they were doing. They claimed that the thing that disinfected the screen ruined the screen, so they had to have somebody else sign the screen, denying that they didn't want transport. Why do you keep, well, Local 522, they're the big stick in California. It used to be the Fitters Union, and now that union is so powerful that they can do no wrong. It's hurting the people, it's hurting the women.
For your comments, your time is now complete. Our next speaker is Guy Stevenson.
And not seeing Guy Stevenson, we will move on, but if he was to speak on an item not on the agenda later, we will be available for that. So we'll start out with item three, Councilmember Kaplan.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Whoops, sorry about that. I just want to again thank the city. Since 2006, the city has partnered with the Robla School District to provide after-school services at five of the campuses. One of them is in mine, and four are in Councilmember Tau's district, but it is really important, this amendment, even more so because it expands it to TK and kindergarten. After-school services are not just needed for first grade and up, and in this high-need community, programs like this are so very important to help our working parents and our students so that they hit the ground running. So I just want to appreciate staff and Robla for partnering with us.
Okay, and then also item three, Councilmember Tau.
Yes, I wanted to echo Councilmember Kaplan's comments on this amazing partnership with the Robla School District and the city of Sacramento. You know, oftentimes, programs in 95838 doesn't offer youth services, and the city has taken it upon ourselves to offer that for our community, especially for working-class families for after-school programs. And so these programs goes a long ways to help our communities, and the city has done a great job with this partnership over the years. And so I would like to, you know, thank city staff and the school district for having these programs for the community.
Excellent, and I'll just say, just a, you know, point of privilege here, I think that one of the many things I've worked on, just in my other, my other life, was this ELOP, or Expanded Learning Opportunity Funding at the state level, and it's something that our governor has enshrined for many years, and it's equivalent $4 billion in the state budget. And one of the things that we do know is that it seems that this money is not always known about at the school district level and being used, and so just always really encouraging us to communicate with our school board members, our family members, our administrators in the school district, to let them know that this money does exist, there's plenty of it still on the budget, and that there's, while there are programs that exist, please advocate that they get funded through this because it's out there. So thank you so much. And so with that, we'll move on to item number four, Councilmember Tau.
I'd also like to commend staff for working on getting this project pushed through. Over a couple of years ago, folks who used the community center had notified that, you know, the electricity wasn't working. We found out that PEG and E has somehow cut off the gas to the center, which was really weird because they didn't notify the city. And staff was great to work with PEG and E to make sure that we get funding to retrofit the community center, so the electrification of the community center, so we won't be on gas anymore. This is also in line with our 2030 general plan for electrification of our community centers and local buildings for usage, and so I think this is one small steps forward to activating this community center for the community again, so, great job.
All right, wonderful. And then item six, Councilmember Kaplan.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Just want to highlight for the report, this also includes District One, that was not mentioned in it, and I just really want to appreciate because it's highlighting the need as we partner with Habitat for Humanity and the Sacramento Tree Foundation, our ambitious goal of increasing our tree canopy, especially, we need that in my Robla and Glenwood Meadows area, and so I look forward to partnering with the Tree Foundation and others so that we can collaborate and get some trees planted to help cool our sidewalks and our streets and our neighborhoods that need trees.
Very exciting program, and we thank our wonderful staff. Okay, so with that, seeing the other members, I thought I saw maybe Councilmember Jennings punch up? Nope, okay.
On the approval of consent.
We have a motion.
Second.
And we have a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, any opposed or abstained? It passes unanimously. Excellent. So we're moving on to our first, and next and only item after that, which is item number 18, our Greenbrier-Northlake Development Agreement Amendment. Welcome.
Good evening, members of the city council. My name is Jose Quintanilla. I am with, an associate planner with the Community Development Department. I'm here to present the third amendment to the Greenbrier-Northlake Development Agreement. The Greenbrier Development is located in District One, and it includes 577 acres south of Elkhorn Boulevard, west of State Highway 99, and north of Interstate 5. The amendment to the Greenbrier Development Agreement is to clarify the required timing of the obligation that the landowner, Greenbrier Project Owner LLC and Greenbrier Phase II LLC, construct the Shore Vista Overpass. This was previously named the Meister Way Overcross, is, I don't know, the Shore Vista Overcross, Overpass. The overpass is a planned roadway that crosses Highway 99 into North Natomas to the east. No changes are requested to Shore Vista Way or to the overpass as part of this application. Additionally, the amendment seeks to identify additional fee revenues to help fund the construction of the overpass. Fee revenues have been identified to fund the construction of the overpass and are also included in the funding agreement included with the staff report. The terms have been negotiated and agreed upon by the applicant and the city. The Planning and Design Commission forwarded a recommendation of approval to approve the Development Agreement Amendment on September 12th. Staff recommends that the city council approve the requested Development Agreement Amendment and accompanying funding agreement. Staff finds that the request ensures the Shore Vista Overpass will be constructed, providing an opportunity, an important secondary access into North Natomas, into the North Natomas community of Northlake. This concludes my presentation. City staff, including staff from the Department of Finance are here, as well as the applicant team, are here if you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you so much for that presentation. Madam City Clerk, do we have any public comment on this item?
Thank you. We have one speaker, Letitia Ramirez.
Welcome.
Hello, good evening, Vice Mayor and Council. My name is Letitia Ramirez. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Fatch &amp; Hooper. Our law firm represents Kern Schumacher and a number of developers in North Natomas who are parties to a development agreement here with the city of Sacramento, as well as, they're obligated to pay a number of development impact fees under the North Natomas Finance Plan. At first, I do want to say that we're very supportive of the Greenbrier Project and very excited of its growth. I personally have a lot of respect for Integral Communities and Mr. Kusnick and Mr. Stanek. They build very high-quality developments throughout California. Our motivation here is, you know, our desire is to have the council continue their consideration of the funding agreement in order to allow us to have an opportunity to have a conversation with city staff about some concerns and questions we have about the funding agreement. We do believe that the funding agreement is separate and the DA amendment can go forward. I was able to briefly talk to a member of your city attorney's office this morning and afternoon, Ms. Leslie Walker, and we did not have a fully robust conversation, but I did tell her, you know, our interest is not to go back and forth on the legalities of, or legal concerns that we may have about a loan of development impact fees, but rather just have an opportunity to sit down, have our questions answered, and kind of express some concerns that we have. That concludes my remarks. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. That was our last speaker.
All right, thank you. So now we'll pass it over to the District One Councilmember, Councilmember Kaplan.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Jose, a couple of questions. One of the things to clarify, because it says that the applicant is Mr. Abdys, but I actually know Mr. Abdys does not own this, and he's, and the property owner is Integral Properties. Can you clarify the obligations under this amended DA that are in fact the property owner's obligations and not Mr. Abdys's?
So typically, the application, these applications are submitted by a representative of the, of the landowner, and that's reflected in the application. Mr. Abdys has a, has a signed letter of agency from the landowners, the development agreement itself, and the finance agreement have been signed by the landowners themselves.
Okay, just to clarify for legality purposes, because, colleagues, this is about building a bridge, and, no offense, I really respect Integral, but I will tell you, when I first got into office, they were saying they weren't building the bridge. And come hell or high water, my community, who is surrounded by I-5 and 99, needs a way to have access and not be cut off. And so this has been a very public negotiated process of how we get that bridge built, not whenever they want, but when we sign this agreement and move forward, get it built starting now and moving forward. So one of my other questions is, is there anything about this agreement and this funding agreement that is unique and that has never been done in the city before?
My understanding in working with the Finance Department that there is nothing unique about this. They do amendments similar to this in North Natomas periodically.
And then there was the concern of, that you guys received a letter. Can somebody please describe to me what the public outreach process was?
Yes, so part of our normal process is we will route the application for review, so that included notification to the Natomas Community Coalition. I also had a conversation with Mr. Thatch earlier this summer regarding the amendment, and I directed Mr. Thatch to talk to Mr. Eric Frederick in the Finance Department to understand a little bit more about the nuts and bolts of the financing piece, and they had a conversation. And we also had some other follow-up conversations with the public speaker before the Planning Commission hearing, which occurred last month as well.
So is it accurate to say that, as I'm looking in the, the report that was drafted, that this went to the Natomas, North Natomas Community Association, Region Builders, Westlake Master Association, Natomas Chamber of Commerce, Natomas Community Association, Natomas Creek, and others, so that this was widely circulated and seen by many?
Correct, those are part of our standard routing recipients.
And were details presented at the Planning and Design Commission about this?
The funding agreement was not included in that presentation, but the understanding of what the dollars are coming from, specific to the North Natomas Finance Plan and the other fees identified, were, are included in the Development Agreement Amendment. So that was publicly notified as part of that.
And am I correct that Ms. Ramirez was in the audience at the Planning and Design Commission?
I believe either herself or another member of Mr. Thatch's office.
So, council members, I wanted, I kind of went through those questions because this hasn't been a surprise. Mr. Thatch has my cellphone. I did not receive any notice or concerns until four o'clock yesterday. This, Mr. Thatch had a conversation with our city staff three months ago. They were at the Planning and Design Commission. They were also here when we passed this on consent over two weeks ago. I am happy and open, and this has been a very public process, on getting this bridge built, but I believe it is wholly inappropriate that somebody can come in in the 11th hour and claim concerns when they've had ample opportunity in over three months to sit down with me and have this conversation. And I have checked with our city attorney, with Ms. Walker, about the legality and any concerns, and I am confident that we have done nothing extraordinary. It is in alignment with the North Natomas Finance Plan, and more importantly, this agreement is getting a bridge built that my community so desperately needs, is already half of the way built, and this bridge was supposed to be there now. And so for me, this is about access and equity and moving things forward, but also sending a message that when there is a public process and people have notification, it is inappropriate to come in at the 11th hour when there has been plenty of access to city staff and myself to discuss these concerns. So I'd like to make a motion to move this, or to open and close this public hearing.
Okay, and, and would you also like to move the item?
And move the item.
Okay, do I have a second?
You have a second?
Second.
Okay, I've got a second and a third. Any other comments from my colleagues? Okay, with that, will you please call the roll?
Thank you. Councilmember Kaplan?
Aye.
Councilmember Tau?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Telemontes?
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Maple?
Aye.
Councilmember Gitter?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Councilmember Vang?
Yes.
Mayor Steinberg?
Yes.
All right, that passes unanimously. Okay, with that, we'll move on, let's move on next to any public comment not on the agenda.
Thank you. We have eight speakers. As you hear your name called, please line up behind the podium. Our first speaker is Sherri Martinez, followed by Richard Miller, then Mary Taple.
When do I go? You can start now, okay. Well, I'm back. Hey. I'm here to announce that the D2 Bike Fest was a major success. Thank you to Councilmember Tau, staff, city of Sacramento for sponsorship and participation. The American River Bike Patrol performed safety checks and provided helmets free of charge. We fed the community breakfast, followed by a short ride to Pipes Bridge and back for free lunch and raffle. We gave away 18 bikes at our free raffle. One of our goals for putting on the D2 Bike Fest is to activate our trail and reclaim it for all cyclists and pedestrians traveling through Del Paso Heights. The next D2 Bike Fest, I'd like to lead a ride up the trail to Midtown. I had to end the ride at Pipes Bridge for safety reasons. There are loose dogs and dogs on tethers that cross over the trail. And there's loose dogs, like I said, and rubbish, making it not only scary but hazardous for the community. In addition, the Northern Sacramento Bike Trail from Acacia to Colfax need immediate attention. I strongly urge you all to help keep our trails safe for traveling on. Our next community-driven Northern Sacramento Bike Trail cleanup is scheduled for Saturday, October 26, 9 to noon, starting at Triangle Park. Special thanks to Sutterville Bicycle Company, Grocery Outlet, Del Paso Boulevard, donated sodas and waters, DJ J 2000 for playing the music, West Coast Wednesday Community Bike Ride Community, 916 Quad Squad, the Hooligans Bicycle Club of Northern Sacramento, Northern California, The Village Lowriders, Bike Party Sacramento, Sacramento Bicycle Kitchen. Together, we all made this happen. Thank you.
Our next, thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Richard Miller, followed by Mary Taple, then Coni Donstron. Go ahead, sir.
Good evening, Vice Mayor and city council members. Rich Miller, it's an honor to stand before you today to express my deep appreciation for the remarkable contributions and dedication of citizens like Sherri Martinez from West Coast Wednesday and the Del Paso Heights inspiring. Their leadership in passing have had a tremendous impact, particularly with their involvement in the organization of the D2 Bike Fest in Del Paso Heights last Saturday. This first annual event was an incredible success, and the turnout speaks volumes on the positive influence they have on our city. With over 150 attendees and eight, 18 bikes on display for the raffle, the Bike Fest was a powerful reminder of how community engagement can foster a sense of unity and pride. From the free raffle giveaways, free helmets, bike repairs, to the free food, music, and excitement that filled the day. It was clear that this event was not only about showcasing bike riding, but also about building connection and offering something special to all those that participated in the community bike trail cleanups and reconfirming our commitment to our community. I want to extend my heartfelt thanks to the city and all the departments involved in the ongoing support of the D2 Bike Fest and other community-centered incentives. The collaboration between local leaders and active citizens like advocate Sheri Martinez is what makes our city thrive. You have shown how strong we are when we come together for a common goal, and for that, I am deeply grateful. Here's to more events like that to inspire, engage, and unite us together. Thank you again, Sheri Martinez, for spearheading, as well as all the other community organizations.
Thank you for your comment. Your time is now complete. Our next speaker is Mary Taple, followed by Triconda Strain, then Guy Stevenson.
Hi, is, first of all, my name is Mary Taple, and I'm also here to thank you so much for the Bike Fest. Is this overhead viewer on? No, okay. I had your, our invite that showed every, every, all the participation. Thank you, every member of the council, particularly our, our excellent representative, Chantel, for, for supporting us and for, thank you to the city staff and the city police, Park Safety Rangers, and, and the American River Bike Patrol. They've been so instrumental in helping clean up the bike trail and keep it relatively cleaned up, particularly safe. Now, we don't have any loaded firearms hiding in tents, being hidden in tents by people along the Sacramento Northern Bike Trail, but unfortunately, we still have some aggressive dogs just south of the, of the river. This is blocking people's safe access to Midtown using the Sacramento Northern Bike Trail, and most importantly, it makes the residents who are coming from Midtown to their own river parkway, and the residents coming from, from the streets very near, nearby the south edge of the river parkway there, for example, off North 18th Street areas of Basler Street and Dryer Street. I had the misfortune of witnessing and people who were being attacked by violent pitbull, violently acting out pitbull. A father and his four little kids, they looked ages six through about 12 to 14, and but for their father dropping his fishing rod, they were all on foot. They, they would have all been severely injured by that pitbull, I think. And nobody in those tents there, the gauntlet of tents that people are forced to go through if they want to access Midtown or they want to access their own Sacramento Northern Bike Way or their parkway. None of the people in the tents called the dog back. They didn't do anything. They just acted like it wasn't their problem at all.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is now complete. Our next speaker is Triconda Strain, followed by Guy Stevenson, then Sarah.
Welcome.
For four years, I've been on the streets of Sacramento, and for four years, I've been on a waiting, waiting on housing. And for the last two years, my son has never, has been, who has never been arrested, graduated alumni from CK McClatchy High School, passed the, at the top of his class for insurance salesman, until a rapid decline in his health, couldn't even get the proper help for housing, killed himself on Friday, October 4. I'm waiting on inspection for, from housing to move into an apartment, but I can't even talk to no one at the housing because there's nobody there. I don't have a place to charge my phone to see how much I need to bury my child, let alone a place to grieve, to think, to how to get the money to, to bury my child. And all of the money that has came in to help the homeless has been embellished by the city and the programs. There are no known success stories from none of these programs, just more deaths of those who are homeless. And I'm now, just being here and hearing about the bike trail thing, I'm a victim, I was on the bike trail. And they attacked me on the bike trail, the police department, to remove me from the bike trail while I was recording them. They took everything from me. I still have a fractured wrist and everything. To be out there, I mean, and to not have no help and to know that all the people are just complaining about something and nobody's not doing nothing to house anybody, you know, is, is kind of disturbing. My son is dead, and I have no place to do nothing. All my art was taken, everything, everything I own was taken from me. And I need some help. I have been here numerous of times. I've talked to Mayor Steinberg numerous of times, and I still can't get no type of help. I'm, I'm, I'm an artist, I'm a musician, and I need some help. I need to bury my son. I really need to bury my son.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Guy, followed by Sarah, then Ron.
Mayor, City Councilmembers, I'm here because I'm a little bit afraid of the next administration stepping in here, the next mayor, about defunding the police and possibly, you know, cutting budget for the fire department. That's an absolute mistake. As I'm a fighter, I'm a blue liner. I support the police. I also support all people that serve our community and help our community. We live in a very unsettled country, and it's kind of unique because I compare it sometimes to the Middle East, which I spent two tours in the Middle East. The police, I don't want them going nowhere. If anything, they need more, more equipment, more cops, and we have to focus on this. But I'm a little bit spooked by the next administration. There were people that disagree with me, and they say that we need to cut this and cut that with the police. They're the people that'll be the first ones to call the police when they need help. So I'm just telling you, moving forward, that under the next administration, I hope and pray, if it's him or her, that they do not defund the police and they do not take any resources from either one of those departments because they're needed. They're just like what she was just saying. It's dangerous out on those bike trails. And without the police and without the fire department, we're going to have problems. But anyway, thank you very much. God bless each and every one of you, and I hope you all have a great night. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Sarah, followed by Ron, then Charles.
The projector's not working?
Yeah.
Okay.
Censorship.
Then you'll have to give me a minute.
It's exactly one year and a day since the Hamas attack on Israel. And I want to read to you some excerpts from the 1948 Declaration of Israel's Independence. And on your own time, I invite you to contrast what I'm about to read to you with the slop that is the Hamas Charter and that slanted, vile resolution that this body passed in March last year. "The state of Israel will be open for Jewish immigration and for the ingathering of the exiles. It will foster the development of the country for the benefit of all its inhabitants. It will be based on freedom, justice, and peace, as envisioned by the prophets of Israel. It will endure complete equality of social and political rights to all of its inhabitants, irrespective of religion, race, or sex. It will guarantee freedom of religion, conscience, language, education, and culture. It will safeguard the holy places of all religions, and it will be faithful to the principles of the charters of the United Nations. We appeal, in the very midst of the onslaught launched against us now for months since 1948, to the Arab inhabitants of the state of Israel, to preserve peace and participate in the upbuilding of the state on the full, on the basis of full and equal citizenship and due representation in all its provincial and permanent institutions. We extend our hand to all neighboring states and their people in an offer of peace and good neighborliness, and appeal to them to establish bonds of cooperation and mutual help with the sovereign Jewish people settled in our own land. The state of Israel is prepared to do its share in a common effort for the advancement of the entire Middle East."
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Ron, followed by Charles.
I think everyone knows that Israel is a pawn of the US. You know, we supply them the, the war machine. We give them money, and that's money that wouldn't be going to the city of Sacramento. It would be, it'd be distributed amongst people like you because you're short of money. But anyway, you know, Darrell's not here, so, oh, well. Let's see. I noticed that the city was gathering around the, the wagons when Heather Fargo did not make the, the mayor's race. KJ started it off with cutting down openness. And then Darrell kept the momentum. Once KJ kind of ruined it, then it became us against you. And let's see. Oh, and you got to protect the city against the horny fire people. That one guy, the, the woman was almost comatose, and he took a look at her boobs, and he excused himself from the guy that didn't know any better, but he had to molest her while she was not...
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Next speaker is Charles.
You need goods.
Is Charles here? That's the last speaker. Thank you, thank you. So now we'll move on to council comments, questions, ideas, AV 1234 reports. Seeing first, Councilmember Tau.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Just wanted to make some, an event or community announcements in my community. We will be partnering with some CBOs, Depotsized Community Association, Clean and Safe Bike Trail Group, to host a movie night on Friday at Triangle Park. And so we invite the community to join us as well. My office will be coordinating with the Depots Boulevard P bid, the North-Sac Chamber of Vida de Oro Foundation, and some other CBOs to host some events at the end of October and start of November in celebration of the Centennial for North Sacramento. And we will be, invite all of council to attend and help participate as we promote the Posse Boulevard as well and invite the community as well.
Excellent. Sounds very fun. We love movie nights. Moving on, Councilmember Kaplan.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Okay, this invite is to everybody. The high-water jamboree is at North Natomas Regional Park on Saturday, October 19. If you ever wanted to see what our public works and others do, sit on an earth mover, see what it does to move big machinery. I always call them like tonka trucks, but like the big machinery, what it's like inside. It is great. Come on out. And if that's not your jam, just pop on over to the Aquatic Center. I know Councilmember Myveng and I have one, one in the north, and I think you have the other floating pumpkin patch in the south. But from 3:00 to 6:00, everybody is welcome to come on out. There's going to be a pumpkin pool plunge, arts, crafts, games, goody bags, and more, and all are invited.
All right, excellent. Okay, other members have any council comments, questions, ideas? Okay, we'll see none. Then I will tell you about a couple of mine. Coming up on Saturday, October 12, so this next Saturday, we are doing our quarterly Good Neighbor meeting for the X Street Shelter. So this is for folks who live in the vicinity or who are just interested in what's going on at the X Street Shelter. We will host it from 9:00 to 10:00 a.m. It'll be virtually via Zoom. You're invited to join us, along with Councilmember Valenzuela, the mayor's office, and many other community partners to talk about. Any questions, comments, or concerns, concerns related to the shelter, or just bring your ideas. And then additionally, on Friday, October 25, we are going to be doing our spooky movie night at Phoenix Park. So as always, I will be dressed up in an absurd costume because that's what I like to do. We are going to be showing hocus pocus, providing candy, popcorn, and just a fun night. Bring your family, bring your blankets and your chairs, and please come out and hang out with us for that. And with that, seeing no other business to come before the City Council, we are adjourned at 6:30 p.m.